Good day ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to the meeting. Would you please stand and took the flag of it? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody here to our meeting tonight. First on the agenda is Recreation Commission. If you would like to make your presentation, we would be welcome to hear it. Two.
Sorry, there's some plans here. If they heard okay, I'm just gonna show them the three. I'm not gonna put it in because... No, most probably they'd be all right. What if all your arms go full asleep?
He put it on at one, I should get it.
There's enough movement coming.
Okay. Sorry, it's funny. Okay, so, the Recreation Commission met last Monday and they discussed in length the current playground and the bids and quotes that we received for the RFP that we put out in late winter. And as we had talked about before, we received four, we have four companies put in bids. One company put in two because they wanted to give us an option. So those bids ranged between $136,000 and $149,656. After many discussions and lengthy discussions about all sorts of different variables, ADA accessibility, the price, the play value of the equipment, not so much the warranty because all the warranties were almost identical, they made a decision last Monday to move forward with UltiPlay. And the total price that we had last week for this project was $142,431. Massachusetts. And it was $142,431. Okay. So this will include an air, two separate areas, just like it is now. So we'll have an area for the 2- to 5-year-olds, an area for the 5- to 12-year-olds. It will include signage and benches, standalone pieces of equipment plus, as well as the larger piece of equipment that have the slides and the stairs and the... It also includes the installation, the safety surfacing, the freight, that did also include a $27,000 discount, which is nice. All playgrounds gave us a discount, so that's nice. We are currently working on a couple of different changes on this plan. The Rec Commission has given us a $5,000 additional funding to make sure we get more swings in the plan. We didn't really feel like there was enough swings, and I know that that's something that they really wanted to provide. We are also... Do you guys want to say anything before I go on to... Okay, great. So I've been talking to Peter and Erin over at the Highway Department. We will be doing some site work as well as additional drainage in the area because it definitely needs that. We're looking at an additional $10,000 to $15,000 more. Peter and I will be working with the town engineer on that project, that piece of the project as well. And I'm sure we'll be having a conversation with John when he returns tomorrow or Wednesday. We'll probably give him a day to get his feedback under him, but... So yeah, I think this is a good project. I know that there has been some conversation amongst the Rec Commission, but also amongst community members of the possibility of honoring those who took the time and effort in fundraising for the previous playground. They will be honoring those folks in some way during the opening. The opening, our due date, or the due date that I set for the project, or that the Rec Commission set for the project, was June 1st, and still is June 1st, however, you know, we gave ourselves a month buffer, or about 22 days actually. In my opinion, I'd like to see the playground all... I wish I had my calendar, I think... It was June 22nd or 23rd. I wanted warm bodies playing on the playground so that it was open by the time summer camp came around. If for some reason UltiPlay and we cannot get this playground in by that time, I will not move it forward. And I know that sounds a little aggressive probably, but I just don't think that it would be fair to the community to go into July without a playground. So I have full confidence that we can get it done, but just know that we have a Plan B, that if we cannot get it done by that point, and we are starting to miss that mark, we're gonna have to wait till the fall. Okay? Just want to make sure that is just very clear.
Let her finish first, and we'll go back for questions, please. Do you have anything else?
I think that's it. I just was putting it out there, making sure that everybody kind of understood our timeline and why we had a timeline like that.
To understand, we're just trying to provide a service with the town. Any questions from the board? Dan?
Are you gonna take delivery or everything?
Yep.
Guys, if you put it off the fall, chance of fuel is gonna be going up, you might get surcharge.
Probably not. Probably not. It's a straight fee. They give us the fee, it's right built into the quote.
Yeah, but if the fuel goes up, it'll mean more of a freight.
I mean, that's a possibility. I would lean on the side of that's not gonna happen.
So any other questions from Board members? Anybody in the public? What can we do for you? What would you like from us?
Well, I think what we'd like to do at this point is start really promoting the playground project, so we're gonna be, you know, really start talking about it. We really haven't had a full-scale conversation with the community about it. Not that we were hiding it, but we didn't want to, you know, promise the community something that we weren't able to deliver. So at this point, now that we're able to deliver it, and we have a deadline for ourselves, I think it's really important to start communicating that with the public. I have promised the library and their staff to meet with them as soon as we've met with you, so that, because we're all, the two departments are really on-site most of the time, and get a lot of questions about each other's departments. So I want to first fill them in, and then I'd like to fill in some of the folks who did the initial, or the playground that we have now, let them know ahead of time before we, you know, really splash it out there and put a press release out. So I don't need anything from you guys, just the support. I guess the Rec Commission will probably ask for the same thing, does it support the project and moving forward with it, so...
Thank you very much, it was a great presentation, appreciate it, thank you. Will you have what?
One more question.
All right, from now on, ask your questions in the time that I ask for, please. Go ahead and ask your question.
So you, all your subs all wind up all for this work, how?
The contractors. We have the company who will do the work for us. So UltiPlay is going to, they'll be in charge of getting the equipment to us, doing the actual build, but the site work is gonna be left up to the town, and I would prefer to work with the Highway Department. I've built four or five other playgrounds in my career, and that is the typical. Peter and I have a really great relationship, and, I mean, he and I have met a couple times on this site. He's done site work for me down there before, and I'm very confident in him and his abilities and his crew's abilities, and I prefer to move forward that way. We're gonna be working with the town architect, uh, no architect, engineer. And, you know, I definitely have confidence in them as well, as well as John. So there's no other contractors besides UltiPlay and the...
Well, I'm just thinking with your timeline, so there's balls in the blade, because people get busy this time of year.
What do you mean?
Right now, it's been a long winter, so now everyone's, you're gonna get at least half on other job projects and stuff, so they may fall behind.
The company? No, they won't.
Tara, have you made arrangements also for reimbursement? Any material that Peter might have to purchase?
Oh yeah, for sure, yeah.
That's all I wanted to know, that's the only question we had here.
Yeah, whatever bill that Peter and Highway gives us, we'll definitely be taken care of. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, you have...
Sorry. I mean, we opened Pandora's box here, and this was as clear as we were talking about it before. I have a real concern about the idea of Peter getting pulled into another project. I mean, we already expect a lot out of him and his crew, so to suddenly pull him into another project is concerning to me. I mean, we have been talking about this year after year, about how much he gets hauled into. I mean, one year he's taking a foundation for a fire department garage, the next year he's, he's just working on everybody else's projects, and that is really concerning, because I feel there's stuff from that end that isn't getting done.
Any other comments from the board? Tara, thank you. Adam Chair, thank you very much, good presentation, appreciate it. Before we move on, I'd like to honor Mr. Peter Cook. Mr. Peter Cook was awarded the Citizen of the Year Award, and I really wanted to congratulate you, Mr. Cook, not only for that award, but for a job well done. Thank you. Volunteer of the Year Award, that's... Thank you. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the minutes, approval minutes from April 9th. Comments?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
If that motion is seconded, have a vote, please.
Aye or aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Soon Suzanne gets through typing, we will move on to her report.
Let's see, I have intent cuts to be signed, intent extirbate to be signed. I also have several proclamations, one for Aidan Scott John Fillion, who has received the Eagle Scout Award, also for Heronin Devlin Taylor, who's also received the Eagle Scout Award, and for Elijah William O'Gree, who's received the Freedom Award from Trail Life USA, and he was the one that did the police cruiser, or at least for those to be signed. Payroll manifested April 15th, and vendor manifested April 19th, to be signed.
Comments, questions? Thank you Suzanne. Moving on in the old business, we don't have any. The only old business I have is the goals for Barrington Select Board. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or whatever you'd like to turn around and discuss that?
I think, didn't we ratify him at the last meeting?
Okay, just, I'm going for another, for another week on that, because I did hear some rumblings, and so that's why I brought it back up again.
Want me to just keep it on the agenda for next week?
How does everybody feel about that?
Maybe a good idea, because we do have a question for John, how to approach changes to the person, oh, policy, there has to be a committee formed.
Okay, please do that, Dan.
Can't be an individual reviewing anything.
There's no new business, we'll move on to, I mean, we have finished the old business, we'll move on now to new business.
Actually, it's, I had on my agenda the paving, paving project.
For the, it's the new business, I have it right here.
Oh, you have it, okay.
One of the things I'm gonna cover first is that remind everybody that we have the all boards meeting on the 30th at 6:30. One of the items that everybody's prepared for is going to be Section 91A. You all know what that is, records of meetings, and we're gonna talk about that, it's a right to know, that's gonna be brought up. Also, with the help of the Planning Board and Marsha, we have a capital project that's submitted by departments from 2018 to 2028. That's gonna be part of our handoff, everybody, and we're gonna use that basically so we can sit down and make changes, we'll ask the questions for it. So as I said earlier, this is gonna be for all boards and committees, and as I spoke to Dan earlier, I will say it again in public, Dan, I'd appreciate if you would notify your individuals, and we'll have them there also if they have the time to make it on that.
You, now 6:30?
Yes ma'am, I'm sorry.
No, no, you probably said it.
No, I probably could've missed it too. So what we have on the new business now is the paving list that was presented by Peter Cook, and I would like everybody to realize that, put a lot of work into this, and I think that, you know, does anybody have any comments on this list, please? Dan, go ahead.
Links and widths, are they gonna be established?
Excuse me, let me answer that. What we were told to have just for tonight is just a list of the roads that are going to be addressed. If, then after the list has been approved, then Peter's gonna take his time to go out and measure and do what he has to do on the roads, and come back with the other information, and he'll make another presentation to us on the approved list of roads, so we don't turn around and have, give me as he has in the past, turn around and measure every damn road they've had, and then when he comes here, we turn around and change it and find some other roads that's not there. So that's why we're gonna start with the list, and then we're gonna have all the information that everybody seeks, the length, the width, and what specifics are gonna be necessary for each road. So that's what I'd like everybody to concentrate on tonight, please. We'll take the materials list and everything else after we do this, and he has a chance to measure and tell us what we need. And I realize that it's getting on in the season, and prices may change, but that's what we have to do, and next year, maybe we can get this started earlier and we'll be all set. Any comments?
No. I've made my comments, no, you have to hear them.
I know you have, I know, and I can assure you, we'll have, we'll have that list up next. So we have page one, does anybody have any changes to page one? Seeing none, go to page two. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just have a question on it. So Beauty Hill, we're not going all the way down to 125. That's a grind, that whole last section, right? Full grind out, rebed. I know it's pretty gnarly, and it was, and still is even now with the frost out of this.
Gnarly, a gnarly road.
If you drove it, you'd know exactly what I was talking about.
Busy road.
The bottom section was a nasty shit.
Any other comments on page one?
Are we sending the original, we had this done as a project, and certainly over time, road conditions change. Are we taking the original report that was presented and then going out and prioritizing the roads based on condition each time?
Do you want to address that, Peter, please?
I'm gonna go out and do that, I base it on, not just condition, but I base it on travel, where the road is, what best benefits the town as a whole. This year's list has a lot of short subdivision roads that have been neglected and need named repair, that's why there's a lot of short subdivision roads.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions on page one? Page two? Any questions on page two? Any changes, omissions, or any other roads somebody else would like to add to it?
No, but it would be nice to add page numbers.
There's one on the bottom of the page.
I have, I have, I have...
I was gonna say, I was looking at these numbers, trying to find, okay.
All right, we don't have anything that's on page two. All right, I'm looking for a motion to accept the roads that Peter has presented. Yes Tracy, please.
As I understand it, it would be a motion to accept the list and then a motion to RFP for the work, is that what's happening?
Only after he goes out and gets the measurements, and goes back with all the other work that's missing that he deems necessary to have done on the roads.
Okay, so I would make a motion to accept the list of road repairs as listed and in the order that has been applied by Peter Cook.
Do I have a second? Dan, you just gonna second that?
No, I have a question though.
Wait till after we get a second, please. Am I gonna have a second on that list?
I'll second it.
I have a second, any conversation, anybody you have, Dan?
So basically tomorrow, this week, you have enough time, you have to get all your work done this week, and then...
You can do the next Selectments meeting, or come in with the numbers.
Well, I mean, that's Monday, 30th?
No, it's not a Selectments meeting, you're on the 30th, that's, that's the fifth Monday of the month, and that's gonna be the all boards meeting.
See, this is why I had also sent the RFP for your approval, so that we can move forward with doing this like ASAP, because we don't meet now for another month.
Well, I have another question generated off this RFP. Bid to do with 14th?
Well, no, I just, I just put, it's a sample, it's a sample.
What I was told to do was get listed roads, which is...
Suzanne, we had two meetings in May.
The list gets approved, and I'm gonna go out and get quantities and numbers, come back with what we want to be able to make a bid. And then get that approved, and then you'll have to bid and get it done.
I was just looking at the dates, so you're, you're under pressure.
That was just an example of what we did to the other...
Yeah, and I left things blank to put stuff in, but...
All right, so...
Okay, that was, that was my thought, so we could get moving on it.
All right, so we're gonna have two meetings in May, I don't think we had May set up for a single meeting, so we'll have, we'll have two meetings in May. I'm not sure that we approved May to start that early, as a single meeting.
We had a meeting scheduled May 14th.
Yeah, there is one that, that's only when I know.
The 14th, we, we, we had the holiday that we went around, that's right.
So we currently have a motion out there to accept the list.
Yes.
Could we do that, Chair Bailey, and then make a motion to put the RFPs out there up to a certain dollar amount? Is that progressive enough to begin the process?
I don't think we really want to put the dollar amount, or the RFP, up till we see what we have for roads and conditions and the mileage and everything else on it. So I have a second on this, we have a vote, please?
We'll start there, I know all.
No, we'll start you at that end, the 13th, now, because I'm down there.
Always?
Yeah, I'm the last one.
Why do I have to first, or am I... Aye or aye? Did that last year?
Aye.
Aye.
Bailey, I, so we accept the name of the roads that are on there, and we're gonna have, what? Figure out a date on the holiday that presents itself, I believe, what is it, 13th or 14th? Do you have the calendar? I don't have it.
Yeah, the 14th is the date, because I've already got things scheduled for the 14th. Like the public hearing on the moving of Orchard Hill Road is one of the things I have.
So the 14th, then it would be the 28th, would be the other...
Which is Memorial Day.
Oh, that's right. So we, usually we bump it to...
Ahead of time.
We've bumped it in the past to Tuesday.
How does everybody feel about that? I don't care.
I'll be unavailable before the 14th.
The 4th of June was for Memorial Day.
Oh really?
Yeah, that's what was on John's report.
So I'll be returning in time to, I think, the meeting scheduled for the 14th, and I will be there.
That's gonna be on the following Tuesday.
No, the 14th she's, she's here, the 14th.
Okay, 14th, yes.
Let's just get to the 14th first.
I mean, we can always do it the week after, do the 21st, the 14th and the 21st.
Yep, you can do that.
It throws us off a bit, but it at least keeps it a Monday to a Monday, it just backs us up.
What would the board like to do?
Comes fine with me.
Would you go do the 14th, 21st?
Which other's best for everybody else?
All right, may I have a motion? Have a motion, have a second? Have a second with Tracy? All in favor, say aye? All opposed?
14th and 21st.
Dan, are you in favor or against it?
Aye.
Thank you, that's fine, we're all here.
All right, so please, you can take care of all the little things on there. Thank you very much. Does anybody have anything else for new business? Dan?
Well, general information, I know personally, I'm paying $3 a ton more for asphalt this year, so it's gonna affect the outcome, and now they're saying, shingles are going up and another surcharge again, and some that are expecting, they're saying there's asphalt shortage now.
Yeah, everything tied to oil right now is taken away.
Taken away, so propane sends the oil from the house. Seems we don't have any more new business to attend to, so the Selectments Report, Mr. Air?
All right. The Town Land Committee, we met and stuff, the board and stuff, and a lot of knowledgeable people there, and I'm very proud of them. And Conservation, last week, John Law's asked me to bring us over to the Town Land Board, it's called Ambassador Land. The younger generation less trails and stuff, so need to open up the trails more, and then like open it and stuff. So even if, eventually, if any logging goes on, and the land invade, they get to put a road in, construction road and everything, and then they can level the land out and seed it, and brush hogging eventually, because we have fields up, at low expense, it'd probably be paid by the logger, because you need to stabilize the area anyway. And then, it looks like we're gonna need volunteers for the Conservation people to eventually, in the next year.
For the commission?
Yeah, numbers are gonna be slacking like Planning Board, so if any public members wanna get active, please go downtown hall, fill out the application form. Thank you.
I think it's a good idea if we can get more volunteers to work in the town, I think once people get started, they'll be more interested in what's going on, because our job is not, by any means, quiet. Mason?
So I attended the first meeting that I've attended for the Rec Commission, and during the meeting, some, some great information went back and forth. They did choose the second least expensive playground that offered the most universal design access to people that are living with disabilities, in particular children living with disabilities. They also chose the best design that had, so while it was the second least expensive, it also allowed up to 160 children at any given time. So some of the designs, I think if I recall, ranged from 80 to 90, all the way up to 200, but they chose the second least expensive with the second highest amount of volume that could be utilized at any given time on the playground. So that was, you know, clearly a star, it's a nice design. They talked very specifically about how to go about honoring the volunteers that built the initial wooden playground, about how to set up memorialization of the work that they had done, and they have some... And they have some ideas that they're kicking around of how to utilize some of the character that is right there on one particular piece of equipment for picnicking. So that's something that they're going to be discussing at their next meeting to see if they can incorporate that retention of that, that one particular heirloom piece for picnicking. There is a fishing derby coming up, I think Saturday, the 5th. They also discussed, we did talk a little bit about transparency at that meeting, and they talked about utilizing their budget revolving fund declaration to illustrate at least what percentage is currently, and for lack of a better term, but expected to be spent out of that in earmarked projects within the year or in funds that are to be compensated back to the town in the course of doing business. And I, I felt that that provided, that was a really good idea and that it provided good transparency for the residents of Barrington.
Very good. I will tell you, the playground project really came through and she noted, and Tara brought up the fact that it was going to be installed by the contractor. I was just, if I could do a handstand, I would, but at my age, I don't think I can do it. And I'm just very pleased with that aspect of it. Thank you very much.
And the very last thing is the project, the contractor they did choose, it had the shortest timeline as well as far as availability of equipment. So I think some of them were up to four weeks, this one was two to three. So I think they made, from listening to all, they made a very wise choice with them.
Thank you. Mrs. Hatch?
There was no meeting scheduled, no requests, no meeting.
Planning Board had a meeting last week. What we had looked at, there was a design review before the board, a preliminary design review for, did we get into who it's for or specifics?
It was for 22 townhouses.
Yeah.
McMahon.
I just didn't know if you talked, peoples, I didn't know if you talked about who the actual owners were. So the owners were for Michael and Lisa McMahon. It's a design review for 22 townhouses that would go in, the driveway would go in between the Legion and the Yellow House that sits up there on the hill. And the townhouses would all be right behind that Yellow House up there on the hill. So he will be, yeah, this was just a preliminary design review. He does have to run through some things and then they will be back before the board.
Of course, that should design if you gave him.
Yes.
Please.
And that's at the next meeting, they'll be back for.
Are they renting those townhouses or selling them?
Combination of both. They're, they are, the design on them is geared to younger families and transitional housing for people between their 50s and probably like 65 or 70. They're not geared to people who are looking for older lifestyles from single four living standpoint. These are going to be three stories. The bottom floor will be parking, the next two floors will be the house up above that. So driving garages and then two floors of residence above it.
And 22 units?
22 units.
And how many bedrooms?
Two to three bedrooms per unit. And then we had a very nice presentation or conversation from, air with me here, just while I pull out his card. I thought I would pull out his card. The gentleman from the Economic Development Committee, I'm sorry, what was his name?
James Burdine.
Thank you.
That was Martin.
From SRPC.
Yes. So I thought I had his card here, but apparently they must have taken it out of my wallet. Because it's already a George Costanza wallet, it's bad enough. So we went through the economic development chapter, talking a fair amount about the economic strengths and weaknesses of the town, economic opportunity, household income, key industries that they're looking at in and around town, educational attainment, looking at unemployment, commuter access, road access, the implication of housing, talking about potentially what it would take for a water and sewer service to be put in, which would be pretty significant. They used the town of Bow as an example where they had installed when it was a $14 million municipal water and sewer system. They said they put it in 2012, but they have not regained the investment on that at this point. We talked a bit about the commercial zoning districts, the economic development strategy and the places that are actually prepared and built out for economic development. And then looking really at high level goals and what the, the goal to ensure development is compatible with Barrington community's character, making sure that the goal effectively promotes Barrington to potential businesses, visitors and residents, and then the goal of implementing appropriate economic development tools and infrastructure investment to support future development.
And will the residents of Barrington find that report on the website?
When it's finalized, they will. But it has not been finalized at this point.
Wow, Andy, thank you very much. I had mine on the library, I went to the library meeting and they had discussions on the upcoming events and they also had discussions on those that were going to be in attendance to the training session that was being held last weekend, so they were all scoring to that. One of the items on the 10th of May is going to be an armchair travel program at the library and it's going to be on Iceland. And unfortunately, the times aren't on my schedule, but I know if you call within, they'll get there. But most of the time those are booked because I've been to several of them. And then on the 15th, trustees meeting, if anybody's interested in public comment. And then on the 19th, we have the parents and spring tea party at the library, so that'd be something for those that have youngsters to go to. That's all I.
An armchair travel party, huh?
Yeah.
Or travel.
They do a few of those.
I've never heard it put that way before.
Yeah, it's, it's new, man, that's all I can say. I don't.
They're doing it.
And, but I will tell you, I went on several, my wife and I attended several of them and they are difficult to get a seat to see. It's all by reservation if you don't have it and they are fantastic programs. And they really, and really, really, that's one we go to.
Is the purpose of it to prepare you to take a trip somewhere like that or? Or is it just?
It would be like you going to upstate New York for two weeks, traveling all around, looking at different monuments, different tourist attractions and then coming back and having a slideshow and making your presentation on the trip that you went by.
Gotcha.
And these, and these are just a fantastic way they do it. There's a lot of, a lot of good information. Please.
Is it, April 25th, there's also a session being held at the library on state government as well, right? So residents could attend and find out how state government works.
Is it this month?
I think this Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, the 25th, yeah, this Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, well, in, in May, it's for, it's a video games.
Oh, okay. But this week there's one on state government, but I think it'd be really interesting.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, finding out how government works up here and how it affects municipalities, counties.
I want to thank everybody for tremendous selectmen's report that's out there, getting everybody to understand what's going on. I thank everybody for all the hard work that you put into to make this work. Moving on, public comments. Any public comments?
Sure, I am. Selectmen Nat mentioned the draft chapter, mentioned the draft economic development chapter of the master plan. I just want to let, let you know that Barbara in our office has worked very hard to link all the information that's going to be discussed at the meeting to the agenda. And the link to that draft chapter is on the past agenda and I believe we're working towards a public hearing on May 14th on that.
On that chapter?
Correct, correct. There were some minor additions that.
May 15th, yeah.
Second meeting was May 15th, so I missed that.
Yeah, Tuesday, I'm sorry, it's May 14th, the Tuesday. But we try very hard to make sure that information pertinent to the meeting is linked to the agenda, so you don't have to look too far for it. With the new, with the new website, it's taken a little bit to, to get there, but I think we're there. Thank you.
And that will be the second planning board meeting of the month. The first is May 1st.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, we're going to, we'll have applications, public hearing on the 1st and then we move some of our other things to the second meeting.
Daniel La, 334 Old Concord Drive Bike. This Saturday, the 28th, a lot of towns are doing take back prescription drugs. No questions asked, just bring them in and drop them off. Many towns around the community, state, because the National Day is the 28th.
Do you know if the police department is doing it this?
Yes, I believe they are.
Okay.
But other towns are doing it too.
Jimmy, every time he's doing it.
Yeah, I did, that's why I was wondering.
Other towns, some people don't feel comfortable to bring them to hometown, they go to other towns.
The highway department's looking to start its four 10-hour days coming this Monday, going till the end of October, like we did last year. I don't know if I got to ask to do it or what, what's going on.
What was the, what was the policy in the past?
Last year, we had talked about not doing it this year because we had a big hubbub over it last year. I'm going to go back to the minutes on it, but I remember, there was a very frank discussion, I think, around it last year. I'll go back and look.
Do you think it does a lot of value yourself?
Yeah, we work longer in the day, as long as we get out there before traffic starts. I think there's a benefit to it, yeah.
Is it staggering so that some people are working Monday through Thursday and others are working Tuesday through Friday or is everyone working?
Just, just Monday to Thursday.
Peter, is there any reason why you couldn't consider something like that? It's split week when you're individuals.
Well, the call, for Friday, that's really nothing. I mean, we don't get called in on Friday. We never had, you know, if we get called in.
I'm just, I'm not.
No, I'm just answering. If we get called in on a Friday, it's usually for an emergency situation. It's not for anything that we were carrying over or didn't get done the day before.
So how come is that? Is there any?
One of the concerns on it, just so you know, was, was, that we had talked about last year was that it started before, it started during quiet hours. So that was one of the pieces that we had talked about, was that we were starting work not in a line, not aligned with the town's quiet hour, noise ordinance hours.
Okay. So it's 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM?
Five is too late in the day, that's when you get into your serious traffic.
Dan, go ahead, what were we?
One of the things came up last year was holidays, so.
Oh, yeah.
And then.
Two. In the summertime, do you have people on call during the week, the weekends?
No.
Would you consider that, put a less than a million on yourself?
If I did that, it would have to be next year because it'd have to go into the budget because it's, it's a pretty significant number. It's a very significant number to have somebody on call.
No, no, this is.
No, no, you get the calls when we get, you have to deal with it. Because if someone be on call, they come in, they get paid like the five, five dollars.
I, I think he answered that, where he said he doesn't have the money to do that right now.
If somebody, if there's a reason or there's an emergency to come in on a Saturday, yeah. I mean, somebody comes in and it's an overtime deal, just like it would be on any other Saturday or Sunday.
No, it's a good lesson, hands off you, so you don't have to answer it or be, be something.
The only reason I do it is because I don't want to, I don't want to add that, that number to the budget, I got to be honest. I mean, if I can come in and I can do something that's going to take an hour to do, I'd rather do it than, than have the budget for somebody to be on call 16 hours, you know, I mean. And then you're also looking at summer. I mean, we're on call all winter long. We, you know, I mean, mostly all holidays are in the winter. You, you don't, you know, you work your holidays, you know, so that, that, you know, the kind of, these four 10s kind of offset the fact that you work through the holidays and you work through the weekends and you're on call 24/7 in the winter.
Please, go ahead.
When a holiday does occur, like July 4th, I think is in midweek, your employees then take 10 hours of daytime off?
It's written in the town policy, you can do that, but that's not what we did last year. Last year, when a holiday fell during the course of that week, we worked five eight-hour days and took that day off as a holiday.
Oh, okay.
So, so to answer your question, if holiday fell on a Wednesday, let's say Wednesday was the holiday, starting Monday, we work eight-hour days, we take that day off as a holiday and then we're on schedule with everybody else.
So that and Memorial Day are the only days that are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, my response is this, employees who have flexibility with schedules tend to be happier, you tend to retain them. It sounds like something worked last year for you and I'm not sure if the board of selectmen makes that, selection, the select board makes that decision or if the town administrator does.
No, this, this would come from you.
Okay.
Let me see.
How many years you done it? I was just going to ask.
We did it, I don't have, I can't really.
I know.
Because we did it a lot.
How quickly we thought.
Yeah, I mean, we did it at the early 2000s and then, then there was a stretch of two or three years, we didn't do it and then we started doing it again.
Let's, let's keep questions. Thank you. I don't know if you can ask it, I'm just asking.
So I think we'll end the reviews that. I'd like to make a motion to accept the schedule of four 10s throughout the summer months.
I'll second that.
Comments?
My comments stand from last year that this is not what we had talked about last year, it's not what we had agreed to, and what we had agreed to revisit. So, and we did specifically talk about the whole four 10-hour days unless there was a holiday, then they would work five, eight-hour days. And it did pass last year, but it was focused on being revisited this year, although that is not reflected in the minutes. It was a very long discussion on it.
Is there anything else on it that we could use, Andy?
It, it just goes through, there were, there was a lot of, there were a fair amount of public comment on it. I can kind of read everybody the transcript here. If you bear with me, because I just went flying up past it. It says, treatment of holidays for the highway department on their summer schedule, four 10-hour, like hour days, how do we want to handle? Selectmen Air would like the hours to be 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM instead of 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM as the town has a noise ordinance and we should practice what we preach. Selectmen Nat felt the highway department should abide by the eight-hour days as the board was going to discuss the holiday issue before the four-day summer work week went into effect. The issue is whether the highway employees receive 30 hours or 24 hours of holiday time this summer. Jerry Caleb stated the highway crew agreed that they should get eight hours off and then take two hours of earned time. Selectmen Bailey noted that we should ask, that we ask a lot of these people and we're only talking about six hours a year of holiday pay. Selectmen Hatch stated that it's a small reward for their dependability. Mr. Caleb explained that the department is unable to take a vacation during the winter months, working four 10 hours a day means more productivity, not working on Friday when people are traveling for the weekend and helps with a lack of time off in the winter. Selectmen Hatch moved to support the 10-hour holiday for the highway department for their four-day work week, seconded by Selectman Bailey. Selectmen O'Brien asked for a roll call, air was nay, Hatch was aye, Bailey was aye, Nat was nay, O'Brien was aye. The motion passed, the hours of operation will be 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM until October 1st. Chief Walker explained six hours addition. Chief Walker explained six hours addition, Chief Walker expects six hours additional pay for his two employees. The firefighters get 1.8 hours when they work for a holiday. Peter Cook recommended that the stated weeks there is a holiday, the highway department will work five days, five days, eight hours a day for that week. Selectman Hatch rescinded her previous motion. Selectman Hatch moved to approve the four 10-hour today, 10-hour days unless there was a holiday that week. Then the highway department will work five eight-hour days, seconded by Selectman Bailey. Roll call was exactly, oh, Air was aye. Bailey was aye. Hatch was aye. Nat was nay. O'Brien was aye. The motion passed. And there was a pretty significant amount of discussion about it, and Rick was pretty heated about that, if you remember.
Yeah, he was.
Because his team does everything everyone else does, and he felt that, he goes, you know, we don't get the same benefit of it, and it doesn't reflect any other department in the town.
Go through the personnel policy. They get benefits. We don't too. So, I mean, I'm not, you know...
No, I think one thing I hear that is the crux of the main issue, so we've made a motion, we've seconded it, is that in conjunction with the motion that they moved to 10-hour days, that when holidays occur, they continue with a eight-hour day schedule so that they're not benefiting more than other departments are, and that occurs twice within the summer months. So, can I amend my motion, please, to include that they, on the holiday weeks, work eight-hour shifts and only receive eight hours of holiday pay?
Hatch, would you put it second?
That's fine. I think that was the way we set it up last year, so...
Okay, we have a motion. We have a, that was renovated, is not the correct word, but it was renovated. Mrs. Hatch seconded. Any further discussion?
Just that, I think if you look statistically, we've proven that, that an eight-hour day versus a 10-hour day proves that you actually get, you get more productivity from an eight-hour day than you do out of the hens.
Not when you're working on the road.
Please, please. I'm going to have a vote now.
Davis speaks for herself.
Going to have a vote?
I wouldn't have had any more information, so...
Okay, so your vote is?
I'm abstaining.
I'm abstaining.
I'm staying.
Carticot I. Hatch I.
That may.
Bailey, aye. Motion carries three to one. One abstains. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Any further, any further new business? We're all done. I'll entertain a motion for...
Jared.
Adjournment.
No goodness gracious.
I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
You promise. I'll make that motion.
Mrs. Hatch made it. She seconded it. All of those opposed. Motion carries.
That's this, so that board...